Are you all ready to go ahead and call me in order? Everyone is present this evening except for Mr. Sisk who is not accounted if he could stand
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. In whose honor stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please, as soon as you can, move your agenda.
I salute.
Thank you. One second.
Thanks, Tommy.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that takes us to minutes from March 15th and March 19th. Do you have any questions in your hearts for a minute's per adoption? Do I have a motion for this agenda, aye, or a table?
Are we talking about both of them or March 15th?
We can adopt them together or separately, whichever.
I'm prepared to move that we approve it on March 15th.
All right, I have a motion for the minutes of March 15th for their approval. John, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Hi, Steve.
Thank you, Brian. And now we have a minute and a half before last week. We're not prepared to adopt this.
I'm prepared to move that we approve it.
All right, I have a motion for approval from Mr. Light. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shul. And all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that takes us three minutes. Thank you, everyone. We have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. That takes us to the next side of our agenda, public comment. This will be the opportunity for you to comment on any of the items on the agenda this evening. We ask that you use the microphone provided, identify yourself by name of the district in which you reside, and address your comments to the commission, please. And with that, it's time for public comment. You'll raise your hand if you'd like to comment. This is the only opportunity to comment during the meeting.
Okay. I just want to make that a fundamental clear. Nevada Estes of empty district. I came to support the special permit for Mont- Mont- what is it? Empty Valley Orchard and getting their special use permit for different events. I feel that the county is looking for agriculturally sound businesses that can promote the agritourism, and I think this is just a perfect fit for the county. As long as, you know, that we're part of it, whatever the needs to cover all the requirements, I go, man, this is something that would be terrific. It gets the tourism in, promotes the, I mean, out for their cattle. I can't do anything better. So, I'm here to promote it. I think it's great. I'm not in a spiritual area, but I went last year during the farm tour and I just, they were wonderful. They've been responsive, and so I had a very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I am Monique Claire Mazzoli in my district, that's where the building is, and right next to my failure. And so, I actually think that the orchard and the store are wonderful additions to the community. I have no objection to that whatsoever. I'm not even here to object to having events at Montmeli. But I do want to point out that over seven, what, about 15 years ago, we worked with the Scruton family, we, that means a bunch of the neighbors up and down Empty Valley Road, worked with the Scruton family because they wanted to have events at Montpelier. And we came up with what we think is a really excellent precedent. These conditions were adopted by Atlantic Initiative, and they are a matter of record. And so, the things that I just want to emphasize tonight, and I think these are things that could be readily looked at, I'll just explain. But the main issues are concerned to me and to the neighbors that I've talked to about this are that we would like to limit the total number of events at this particular site to 12 per year and no more than two, two per month through the months of May through October. In other words, no cramming of all the events into a short period of time. That's number one. Second is that noise not being discernible beyond the borders of the property. As I said the last time I was here, if you haven't, if you don't live in Empty Valley, you don't understand how much you can hear cows mooing from one end, from one end of the valley to the other. It's an amazing sound reverberation situation there. So, even though I've seen loud noises, it does carry. And so, there is a condition in Scruton's special, special exception for their property. Now, I would say that they are no longer there, and so this, none of this really applies to Montpelier anymore. And that should also be the case if this property is sold, the special exception should come to mind. But what we agreed with the Scrutons was that there would be no discernible sound from loudspeakers or other loud sources at the property limit. The third thing is that we asked for a review of this special exception every year, and we might be, we might be happy if there's two, but not more than two. And we would like to make sure that there is adequate screening of cars in the parking area because Empty Valley is a uniquely gorgeous and special place, and I think everybody agrees that the beauty should be protected. Those are the main items that are all listed down. Joe Spaceus, who's our neighbor, has provided some time to the exact terms of the Scruton's special, special exception, and I think it's, I think it's a terrific place to start. In fact, I think it's a terrific place to end on all of these issues. And it is a precedent that is, that is real, and it's very good. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I need Ramos Hampton, district. On another subject for tonight is the draft sign ordinance amendment. I've watched you all go through that, and I think that the suggestions that we may have included, from what I can read, what I reviewed it today, and I think you guys are pretty close to a pretty good sign on this. And so, I want to congratulate you all because I know how hard fought it is to get things done, and it's, it's close to being done. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? This is the only opportunity for public comment in this meeting. All right, I see if everyone has a chance.
Sorry, public comment. Sorry, does that include me too?
You may have some questions in regards to your application, but if you have something to say about the application now.
No, just regarding the application.
If everyone has, have their say, I'll go ahead and declare the public commentary closed. And that takes us to old business, new business, there's none, and then old business item G, special exception 22-07-01, Montmeli Conference Center. If I recall correctly, you had a few things, flinging questions after the last meeting. Just to check in to see if everyone felt that those had any kind of interest.
Well, I don't know that we have an answer on the vegetative buffer.
Sorry, I thought that was included. We didn't find the description of.
Please be sure to use the microphone. I'm sorry, now, and you may want to squeeze the handle a little bit.
Vegetative buffer.
It's a fight every meeting.
It's okay. Usually I don't use.
Okay, Gary.
Yes, Mr. Ritter, we thought a plant that was a root, it was a lute and laurel, and trying to find something that deer don't want to eat, because I definitely don't want to plant them next to the highway. That's something that would be tasty to the wildlife coming back and forth. And basically, that vegetative buffer. I brought a bigger blow up so you guys could understand the size and scope of it, in case you had any questions. So, basically, the topography rolls over here downhill.
Yeah.
Towards here. So, basically, what we're, so basically, what we're saying is like, you have to plant the lute and laurel along here, basically between the first and second oak trees. Or, that might be maple, sorry. And because beyond that, the slope rolls over, and then you really can't see, now, I took a picture of my suburban from, I can see the roof, right? Because the road down here is four feet lower than the grade of the field already, so by the time it rolls over, it's already on the backside. So, I don't know, anybody had a chance to kind of look at the orchard?
Yeah, well, I actually did the same thing. I have a suburb, so it's a little short, but I parked it down there and maybe went out, and I could barely see it as well.
Exactly. So, but if there are any other questions regarding any statements that we completed, I mean, obviously, the parking area, if that's a six-foot hill, I understand how big the field is. And so, where the parking area is, basically. And so, the tent, obviously, if you had any questions before, the tent would be actually behind the building here, and attached to it from the side. There was a question about the well, you know, here, this is, the fence actually runs here, so there's no access for a car to hit the well, no access for, you know, the pumps, pump houses here, and then the distribution box, Mr. Henry, you had a question about where the drain has to be. And so, basically, this entire stretch where the peak is, is probably, you know, 400 yards, maybe, at least, where that, where that, where the stuff that grown up would be if any, if there was ever an overflow, for any particular reason.
Did you get the explicit detail of the subject and its capacity?
Only from the, from the county report, because, and then we've also proposed that if there's more than two, you know, if it's over that duration, if it's, if it's not within the scope when the market's open, obviously, the capacity would be there if it's limited to X amount of people. And if, if it's above that, and if it's during that, then we would mandate that they would have a portage on on-site to handle any additional usage that it might, might have to have out there. I mean, it's talking about 600 gallons per day on a normal flow.
I think we figured 25 gallons of per person.
25 gallons per person?
Yeah, per person's there all day.
Well, if you flush it once, that is a gallon flush.
You know, that's why we wanted the capacity with the details on that report.
Right, so the, the report says that 600 gallons per day.
Right.
But with your number of people that were coming into the orchard, and then, at the same time that evening, when you had people coming in for the event, it was pretty evident that you was going to exceed your capacity. That's why we would have demanded a portage on be on-site for that when the amendment is in place.
I would just comment on the mayor of the parking that I also went by and took a closer look, and I would say that with the two entrances, it was actually kind of interesting, because I think this parking would satisfy our, our abandoned language back, kind of parallel ingress and egress. And I do think the size and orientation of the parking is good, and low buffering would be, would be adequate, so as far as the parking is concerned, I'm satisfied.
So, your neighbor, Delaroe, mentioned that the conditions that they worked on 12 years ago, in Montpelier, and one was the noise sound, sound on Montteau across the property line. With Montpelier, it's set up on a hill, and they were dealing with 200 acres plus, I believe, there. And their house was on rise, on a hill, but it was more substantially off the road in your property. And it was probably way more difficult for sound to leave there, plus, I think the events that they had were, I guess, that would be the south side of the house, and they had the house pretty much blocking any, any noise that would be possibly going towards the very, their property. But, but with your property here, there's no way the sound can really be kept inside. So, I want to say that out to the neighbors right now, that with this 30 acre, 36 acre site versus the Scrutons have 200, 300 acres there, there's no way the sound is going to stay inside. Sound's going to leave the site. The building is what, less than 200 feet from the property line?
Well, fair enough.
Sure. Yeah. So, the sound is not going to stay with the site. It's going to leave. So, that's one condition that if y'all are looking to have a motion, I don't think it's going to happen. It's going to be, be able to satisfy that at the most.
Yeah, I tend to agree. Convenient as that simple metric might be, I, I, I guess I was looking at it the other way. I think that would be essentially the prohibition on amplified music if we were to impose or recommend or to be incorporated that kind of limit. So, I am a little stuck on that as well. I do think orientation, again, also with the neighboring properties, the surrounding area, you know, I, I understand that noise is odd, and it's a valley, and people are up high, and, but it is pretty, it is pretty remote, and it is, you know, sometimes I think it's hard to kind of associate these activities with something that's clearly agricultural. To me, that's another factor here, so I do, I mean, it makes me a little bit more comfortable with, with this. But I, I guess I'm still not sure, I would like to find something clear and achievable and enforceable on noise, but I'm not sure that the boundary, boundary limit is, is going to do it.
Yeah, I, I guess my only question or comment would be my direct neighbors that are within a half a mile have not expressed any concern or interest.
Yeah, that's a good point. And the other factor is, this is, I guess it's adjacent to that need where there's a slightly elevated intensity of use as well. I'm not sure, I didn't take the time to look at the buildability of the parcels around there, but I also have certain, I'm more concerned about houses that are already there than somebody coming to it now, talk about whether there's any unbuilt lots around there, and if those were, those neighbors would be adversely impacted. We haven't heard much about that. So, I'm not sure where that leaves me, but those are my thoughts. I don't know how, if you were heading toward a recommendation on that.
Well, I just want the neighbors to, to realize that there's, there are expectations or requests to stop noise at the property line. It is, with this site, I don't think it can be met. You know, and your question about what's going to be developed, built on around there, you know, the property across the road, sold a couple times, 200 acre lots, and Fletcher family still owns a property on the corner of Holland, and that's all of the visible. Luckily, land across the road, I think one or two of those parcels may be in sin of amusement now, so that's a plus. But, you know, there's going to be more houses to come, and you do have some, you know, larger, I guess you could call them historical properties, meaning Montpelier, you've got Hall Farm down Holland Road, state property, so, and, and George Miller's farm there, that's a large parcel, and that's 600 to 800 acres there, that something's going to happen there at some point in time. So, there is going to be a lot more work developed there, and I don't know why people haven't responded now, because they're asking too many dollars, and I don't want to drop out these addresses. But, you know, I think if we move forward with this, that we, it would probably be a good idea to have annual review one for a while, just to see if noise is created and how the neighbors feel, so.
So, we did speak with Lilla Fletcher today, just stuck with Bill, and he's like, that's fine, but obviously, she's not here to represent her son, but. So, we did address it with Lilla on her concerns. I called Bill before I put the permit in, and I chatted with him about that, since he's enjoying, enjoying property, you know. And the Rick, 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 Curtis, Department, I spoke with them earlier today and as well. So, they're quite aware, I mean, they're really directly right across the street, and, you know. So, anyway, from that perspective, I can understand that. I mean, I, I, you know, we had talked about a two-year permit, a two-year review, and the other question, you know, to spread it out, as you had asked, so, you know, in the permit, if we could modify it basically from May.
For April.
Or, you know, April, when the blooms come in, to whenever the work closes, then if you spread it out, you know, 12 over six months, it'd be no more than two a month. And guys, do you, I'm, I'm, I'd be shocked if everybody's going to sign up and say, I'm having a wedding, right? That would be my wildest dream that that would happen. So, especially this season is pretty much gone anyway, so year one is going to be over and done with from any particular perspective.
By the time you get through the board supervisors, you'll probably be.
Well, there you go. So, I'm, I'm just saying.
And that's not a reflection on the board supervisors, that's just the way.
Right.
That we have to notice meetings, it takes a while to get through the processes.
Interesting. So, I mean, I'm only a, you know, trial by error, if you agree that, you know, we want to be respectful. We, you know, you know, from, from the music that's being played, I mean, we live here too, and so, from that perspective, you know, we're very cognizant of the neighbors. We try to be extremely friendly and accommodate whoever it is, and that's why we reach out to all the neighbors, to understand what's going on. So, so from that perspective, anyway, we just hope you approve the permit. I think we've tried to accommodate everything, and I understand about the noise, the concern, you know, and we are not, you know, as far as shielding and heading north on Empty Valley Road, I mean, the building itself, whenever we've had a function, or personal events, mind you, in the tent is behind the building here. So, as far as, you know, between the cars going by, or whatever music, I mean, if it's over 10:00 p.m., it's not a very late night for any of that, you know, and, you know, that's, that's not all.
I did have a question about the change to April, because this was written up for June. Is that problematic, Michelle, or is, or is that something that we can change at this point?
We can change it at this point.
Okay.
I mean, from my perspective, two per month and 12 per year is all I care about. If someone wants to be there in March for some reason, why should we care?
April's dangerous. Sometimes it snows in April, but no one wants to hear that.
We lost most of our beaches, so I'm not that good.
Well, and I got married on March 1st in spiritual, and it was a 73 degree day, and I, everyone said, why didn't you have an outside wedding?
So, one thing clear, that this is not a wedding center, it's a conference center. So, I probably believe that, you know, you could have other items that other than weddings, you could have.
Class reunion.
Class reunions, the Jenkins family reunions.
Sure.
The Ciss family reunions, you know, whoever, you could have, there's a, it's a conference center, so it's a whole venue of things that, that other than just weddings.
True.
So, just let that be stated, this is not a wedding center.
But, but again, if you think about 12 per year or two per month, extending the season is only going to serve to spread out the events more.
Sure.
And so, I personally think, I don't know why we would put limits on the months, but I mean, that's a market thing.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a problem from a noticing.
I think it'd be better to notice now, to do it now, just whatever data gets good and taken for a year from that date. So, the neighbors are going to know they have a problem after one or two, three events. And, you know, this way, it's, they'll get whatever number of events that they occur, and then next year, we can, can see how it went. So, I would rather start now, and they may use up all 12 in the 12 months before they come back. But I would rather do that and maybe try to get them a full 12 events in before they come back and say this.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Let this noise.
Yes.
All right, this is Rappahannock County. This is rural, and it's country as you can make. We're not laughing, we're not fire attacks, and we're not Prince Week. So, we're not really on a state noise level. And it was made reference here about the towns. The towns were here before any of us came here, okay? And you're going to hear that, and it should be heard. I don't think this issue is a big issue about this, this music level, and I don't think we should get hung up on that, this, this board. And, and yes, I agree, we can come back and review this, and if the neighbors have complaints, if they have a complaint during, during an event, they can call the sheriff's office, they can address it that way. It can be addressed. I don't think it's going to have that problem. But again, this is Rappahannock County, where it's country as you can get, and there, the Empty Valley is no different than the rest of this county. And there has been bluegrass music coming out of the Empty Valley forever, long before any of you came here. And those people are still there, and I don't know, have we ever had any complaints about music in this county? We, we don't have, we only have villages, and this place is nowhere close to a village. We don't, that's all we have, is little villages in this county. So, it's, again, it's as country and as rural as you can get. So, I don't think that we need to get hung up on this board as well.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
So, I would like to make motion that we approve this special use permit and forward it to the board supervisors with the following conditions: up to 12 events per calendar year, no more than two per month, maximum number of guests for each event should be 150, no amplified music after 10:00 p.m., compliance with all state and local regulations, if the property is sold or transferred, the permit will become void, that, that items one through four, especially the downshielded lighting and the vegetative buffer be included in the conditions, and that the permit expires after two years.
I, I think it's discussion there, discussion.
May I make, may I second the motion? And I have, I have two items I'd like to consider for you to amend and add to the motion. That is largely the items that I also had included in my motion. I actually probably have three items to add that I would request you add to your motion. No overnight accommodations or restaurant on-site, and that was from the previous permit that was granted, that was one of the, one of the conditions. Hours of the permit are 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., average daily, and I think, I'm hoping to address the septic without addressing the septic and leave it largely in, in the owner's hands, which is, you know your business, and you know how many people are coming to your business every day, and I'm sure you want your septic to function well just as much as we do. So, if anticipated, daily patron count planned. So if anticipated daily patron count planned, if anticipated daily patron count plus planned event exceeds 250 people total, additional restaurants will be provided, portages. I think there is also a water usage component here that we have not addressed. So no additional activities regarding water except for hand and fruit washing, which I also understand is a condition of the subject.
Well, I accept it as amended.
I will keep my second of the motion in place. And I thank you for capturing the concerns. Michelle, did you capture them? Can you renumerate them for us? I'm so sorry. I just want to make sure we've got everything. Steph, do you have them? Would you mind? And then I'll add the couple.
I think I have up to 12 events, no more than 12, two per month. Maximum number of guests should be 150. No amplified music after 10:00. No overnight guests or visitors. It should be open from 10:00 to 10:00. And then we're including the item one, which has to do with the storage, that if there's over 250 patrons, including those coming for the orchard, there should be portages.
And then the vegetal buffer, as shown, as proposed, and lighting installations will be downshielded in addition to no overnight accommodations, no restaurant on site.
What about renewal?
And it expires after two years or upon sale of the property.
Yeah, exactly. Right.
Two questions here. Number one, so you're going to have amplified music before 10?
Before 10:00 a.m.
Before 10:00 p.m. She said no amplified music after 10:00 p.m., which says you can have amplified music.
Yeah, because I don't know how you have music without it just being amplified. Honestly, you play guitar with an amplifier.
So basically, the hours for events, I'm not sure. I mean, I don't, it's a little odd to me to specify when they can start generally and then only specify when the music has to end. That seems a little odd, but I can work with it. But I think to you a question, that those conditions would allow amplified music during the day. And to me, when we think about this being agricultural rural area, it's really only the nighttime hours. I tend to agree with Mr. Atkins for anything during the day. The time that it begins to become not merely just rural is the after dark time. But anyway, I'm okay with it.
Is amplified music in events, shall seats that come here? Is that what you intend, Steph?
Yeah, well, you're right. It's sort of somewhat we've done to go 10 to 10. So we just say the event goes from 10:00 to 10:00.
Well, I think the reason, sorry, the reason we tend to do the outdoor music is what does that mean with respect to, you know, caterers pulling out and cleaning up and all of that? I mean, if you say, what exactly is the end of the event? To me, the end of the event that we care about from a zoning perspective is.
Music stuff.
Yeah, I agree. That's correct.
Well, I think if you're going to end it at 10, you need to end it at 10. I don't think, you cut the music off and then you have people there until 11:00, 12:00, 1 o'clock. We've never done that. You set a deadline for an event, and the event is over then, people left. Of course, people stay to clean up after that time. But I think we've kind of held that an event is over, you don't just cut off the music and then party until everybody drops.
Right. So amplified, amplified music and events shall stop at 10:00 p.m.
Well, the event stops at 10:00 p.m. Everything stops.
Right.
You go home. Yeah. Just like, don't, not just turn off the music. It ends at 10:00 p.m.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So another way this motion is being crafted, it's unfair, I think, to the applicant. You're stating that the permit expires at the end of two years. They got to reapply.
That's correct.
It's not a look. It's not a review of the permit. Look at our conditions to extend it again. It ends, so this process happens again.
That's correct.
I don't think that's correct. I think if they jump this rope tonight, I think we look at their activity for a year and if we need to adjust something, we do, cancel it then. I don't think it's fair to them to come back and go through this for two or three months, pay another application fee and do all this.
I think, sorry, but. Well, I would say that, to my mind, by the time this gets through the board supervisors, it will be September or October, which gives them all of next year, plus the following year, which also, you know, to put the shoe on the other foot, it gives the neighbors some recourse if things are being held but don't comply. We've all been through a revocation process. Revocation processes are very cumbersome, they're very acrimonious, and they're very difficult. And it requires a lot of legal leverage if it doesn't work out to get the permit pulled. So having a two-year expiration gives them more than a year to get their feet under them and see how things go and if there's a market for this sort of thing, if it's worthwhile for your time. And two years also gives the neighbors two seasons to experience the events and see if it's something they can live with, or if the conditions aren't right, or if it is impacting their quality of life as neighbors. Those are very reasonable things to consider. And so I think a two-year expiration date is reasonable breaks for both the landowner and the neighbor.
I don't think this ending the permit is the correct way to encourage people to plan doing things in this agritourism. They come in, they built the structure here for us, they listen to us, the neighbors have put their input into it. And if there is something wrong, I don't think the neighbors should have to go through 24 events over two years over this duration. I think they should have an opportunity to voice a concern after one year. And it should be a renewal permit if we need to adjust something here, whether it's the hours of operation or go back to the sound or something, we can, and not create a two-year duration of a problem.
My understanding was that we don't have a renewal process, that we only have a review process. And we all know that reviews have their time. If there's a review, that means if there's something wrong with reviews, the only way to cure it is with a revocation.
Why couldn't, if we can, if we can put an end on it, why couldn't we put a renewal on it?
I don't think that's a process in the ordinance for that. There's not a renewal.
Is there, is there an end process in the ordinance? I don't think zoning decisions typically have end dates either, so.
There can be expiration dates.
There can be expiration dates on these sort of permits. And it's correct, and they have to give that through the entire process to come.
I do agree that the reviewable after one year is, feels good, but does nothing.
I agree. I don't see why it has to mean nothing.
We should probably.
I mean, I understand when you came in a year ago, hey, 11 o'clock or, you know, 10 o'clock didn't work. You couldn't get things wrapped up. It took, it took an hour to get everybody shut down, whatever. We got to end it at nine. So we can get it to 10 like we wanted, or?
I mean, I think it's generally because it's zoning. It's a vested right sort of thing once you make it. I mean, it's got to be kind of clear tonight. I think if we were to do that, maybe we could do that separately in the ordinance, put some kind of, you know, not in this application, but if we talk about, you know, make it more clear what the terms are for a revocation or, you know, whether the, it's just the conditions to be revisited after a certain amount of time or something else that we could, that would be, make it more clear that we have some levers to turn after some preset time. But I don't think that's really germane to the application before us.
Sure.
So the ordinance is what it is.
Well, you know, perhaps a procedure that doesn't require him going or any acting and starting over again. And granted, they can grab their dust off the old application and hit it again, but to start the process all over again, we know where everything is, it's just what were the concerns that were raised over that period of time by both staff and adjoining neighbors or other concerned people? You can have a bad egg in any type of business, you know, any medical business or legal business or stores or garages or whatever, wine wreaths, whatever. And yes, I guess there's problems here with agritourism issues of people stretching, stretching the band and trying to do more and avoid things. And I think some of these properties that we're talking about, referring to, they have a lot more neighbors, you know, in more densely populated areas. And this property here, it's in the FT Valley, it's a large parcel. There's really been no opposition. We've worked on the conditions. We've worked at trying to make this acceptable. And we're willing to look at conditions that will hopefully not be hard on the applicant and not be burdensome to the, to the neighbors. They have concerns about the noise and things like that. So, you know, I just feel, you got to start a business of every two years, you got to make, start from scratch and make the revocation. That's crazy.
Well, we don't have much of a finer tool before us today, and I'm inclined to call a question because we have a motion we will make instead.
But what the county needs to do, they need to come up with a dollar amount for a permit or something and address, address this like any other business. This is not right to happen.
Well, I mean, what does a special exception permit cost?
Three hundred.
I mean, it's $300 to be here for a two-year permit. That's the cost of doing business. Over 12 events, it's $30 event. You add it to the cost of the event, that's how you pay for your permit.
So then you come in, so what additional costs are is that, you know, they have some degree of success. So they buy stuff for this venue, for the conference, and make investments maybe in sound equipment, chairs, tables, whatever, umbrellas, whatever, and make these plans and make bookings. You know, people book weddings out of year. So you get a booking, 18 months in, you book a wedding out. Six months after, your permit expires. We don't know whether we're going to have a permit. Maybe we will, but we don't know.
Does he have to restart the permitting process one year into the activity?
So he can. You know, so how can they book anything beyond their permit? You know, if they got a two-year permit, they can't book something if they're 22 months in it for something four months later, again.
Well, I mean, I think it's a good suggestion to send that to the supervisors, and they can grapple with it, and they can lengthen it or shorten it or do away with it if they can fit.
And then you also subjecting the neighbors to a two-year duration if it, if it's as bad as it can be.
Well, there can, there's always a revocation process. They still have recourse to raise a complaint and start a revocation process if there's comments before two years.
Has that been done?
Yeah, I think Clark Lane is the last revocation, the last, the only revocation that I could get.
Clark Lane is what stars on the ordinance. I think.
Well, I don't disagree with you on that.
Well, no.
And this relates to the question, and we do have a motion and second.
Could I just make a comment that I do think, I think we should stay focused on the fact that we're not talking about two years. The Clark Lane situation was they violated the conditions. We're not necessarily talking about bad actors. We're talking about uncertainty about whether the conditions that we are setting are going to have the desired outcome with respect to the neighboring property. So I hear the concern. I don't hear really much of an alternative unless I missed it. So I guess I would like to call a question. It's like Mr. Atkins. I don't know what to proceed with. Sorry to fight complicated things.
All right. We're trying to wrap up, but yes, you meant, sir. I don't like to cut people off.
Okay. What is the worst thing that can happen? If these people are going to do it violently, it's going to fall on Asia, then if it's loud music, well, if that's the only thing that they, that they create, that can be addressed. It doesn't have to be white trail monster on the road. That can be addressed after it happens again. That's what the law is here for. That's not what we are here for. That's what the law here.
You're referring to like nuisance, just general nuisance kind of reasons or descriptions?
I really don't see a big issue about the noise level. I think we're getting hung up on something again. We really don't, we don't need to dwell on.
I don't think we're hung up on noise because the way that Steph has crafted the motion, the only input on noise is that amplified music will stop at 10, events will stop at 10.
And there'll be a few, and there won't be any other.
So we're rushing right now to the purpose. Answer this question for me. Do they start having events after they put the screen on or before they put the screen on? They got to plant the trees first before they, since that's a condition.
Yeah, my understanding is that all conditions have to be met, and the VDOT conditions have already been met, correct, Michelle?
That's correct.
Yes. So, and like I said, maybe when we get through the board supervisors, the period is extended. I'm thinking of a special exception permit though for our board supervisors. And I think it took us three motions to get to where we could get a majority of the board to agree to pass it. And expiration dates were a big part of the hangup, and it varied from one to as many as three years before it got through. So two is, you know, more than one, less than three. It's the middle road for the supervisors to grapple with if they're inclined to impose an expiration date. And they may choose to do away with it altogether.
I know we want to move, but I'm just thinking if maybe.
See, you called for the question, Harry.
I'm just, one thought is if it expires after two years and we also have a review after one, could we then choose to extend? I don't know. Maybe we're talking about potential future changes to the way we handle these applications. But I think there are some more, so.
Okay. So I would maybe say that I would like to make a friendly request to amend the motion for staff to please craft options for review, renewal, or expiration dates, so that supervisors can consider all of their options.
Well, I can have, you know, I can have you amend it just to say that after two years there's a review, but I don't, there's no, there's no mechanism for bringing them back.
That's correct.
So I can say that. You guys can keep doing whatever you know, and maybe you'll feel like coming in for a review or maybe you want. But I just don't know. There's nothing in the ordinance that provides a procedure. I agree. I think it's totally burdensome to have to come back.
We've done reviews in the past in its work. I don't know, comedy up here may be an exception, but I can think back. We had a lot of reviews, but in the days of McCarthyism, that, that people came back here for reviews, and it was never a problem at that point in time. It seems that zoning's been around in the county for now for 60-plus years, but it looks like this shouldn't be a situation that blooms up tonight for the first time.
Okay, I think we can soften. I make a friendly suggestion that we amend the motion that instead of a two-year expiration, we have a one-year review.
Okay.
You're, you're agreeable to that stuff?
I'm happy.
Okay, I'll keep my second.
I just slide on to that.
So I think that.
Is it a review, one year here? A review of revisitation of the conditions?
I mean, it's a one-year review of the application and the conditions under which it was approved.
And no expiration?
No expiration.
Okay.
I wouldn't say anything.
No.
More of a question than that, but.
I'll give you the advice, I'm glad you know what you're carrying. Can we roll call vote for this, Michelle?
Please.
This will be a roll call vote. Mr. Shulon?
Aye.
Mr. Ritter?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Aye. Mary, thank you. It's unanimous. We'll see you at the board supervisors. You are welcome to stay or you are free to go at this point.
It's not like Alexander, D.C., is it?
Usually have people inside yelling at you. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you for having me. Have a good evening. Okay. Let's take a brief, brief last.
We can search.
That shoe felt a lot better. I said, "That shoe felt a lot better."
I told you it would be all right, Mr. Kudus. It would be all right. Have a good night. Thank you for coming. Have a good evening.
Well, we might wanna put something in the ordinance about two years.
I don't know. I'd do it anyway. My understanding is, we discussed this before, is that there are limits on our legal remedies and tied up in the whole vested rights thing. So, I'm not sure if there is a solvency on the termination date. I have heard that. We've addressed this and discussed it some years ago, how it is concerned. And I don't recall even the opportunity for an expiration date coming through that.
All right, well, we're waiting for Mr. Shulon. I think we can proceed. We just have a few things to work through. One is zoning ordinance amendment regarding vehicle access to events for which we are still waiting for guidance from the board supervisors and legal counsel. So, there's, unless anyone has input on that, we don't have anything to move forward on that in particular this evening. And then, the draft sign ordinance amendment. Miss Summers, you had an update for that?
Yes. This Friday, Mr. Curry and Mr. Goff are planning on meeting to go over the Berkeley Group's comments on their draft line by line and sort through that. And then they'll bring the comments back to the Interpreting Commission.
Right, so I don't know what everyone else feels, but I think until we get through the legal underpinnings of what we're trying to do, it would not be beneficial to undertake the stylistic or minor recommendations that were made.
I agree. Also, some of their, their initial comment was extremely confusing.
Well, that's why we're letting the legal counsel. And then, we have our ongoing list of directions from the board supervisors on which we don't have any, I mean, we already have several things working on the agenda in that regard. And then, we have a special meeting with the Berkeley Group on the 25th.
In which we need to continue this meeting too.
That's correct.
Instead of adjourned.
That's correct. And that meeting will be here in the courthouse at 7:00 PM?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, 6:00 PM.
Sorry, 6:00 PM, okay, I'm sorry. And then, roundtable discussion, does anyone have anything else?
Don't.
No? All right, if no one has anything further, motion to continue this meeting till May 25th at 6:00 PM at the courthouse?
So do.
All right, and a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Everybody, the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.